I am here to ask approval of the changes for the onsite helper job description. The changes are, we would like to add for number four, under qualifications must have completed the childcare standards per the Florida Administrative Code, which is 40 hours of training. We have checked and required this when we do hire some, an onsite helper now, but we just wanted to add that piece to the job description. And then, under performance responsibilities, we added number 13, to annually complete the childcare standards, Florida Administrative Code, they have to complete 10 hours of training. So, we wanted to add those to, to the job description.
I move to approve that we accept the changes on the onsite helper job description.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cindy, second. Do you have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
I have. Here's five zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning. PowerPoint up and going. I am here to ask for your approval to move forward with the Health Insurance Committee recommendation concerning our health insurance administrative services only contract. And I do have some information to share with you in that regard. Last time I was here, I shared with you the projection for our year end numbers. We were very, very close to what we had projected. This slide does have a bit of an update from the one that you had received a couple of days ago. And you'll see that our bottom line net that we ended our year with was the negative 590,458, slightly different than the 520, just a few little adjustments after our last meeting. As we stated at the last meeting, we had anticipated that we would end up in the negative. And in that, with that anticipation, we had set aside a line item to be reserved for 1.6 million should we need, need that money, in recognizing that we would probably need money to help make the budget balance. This is the actual actuary statement. As you know, we take our information at the year end and our calendar year end for health insurance, we take to an actuary who looks at our numbers and prepares our report for the state. As a self insured health insurance plan, we are required to submit an actuary report to the state for actuary soundness. So, after giving this to, the information to our actuary, he prepared this report for us. And in the end, it was needed to move 600,000. As you saw on the previous slide, we were at the negative 590,000. So, we did transfer 600,000 of that 1.6 million that we had set aside anticipating that there could be a need. So, after that transfer, he did submit this report to the state for us on our behalf. And we have received information back from the Office of Insurance Regulation that our plan is actuarially sound, which is a good thing. There was a time earlier this year that we weren't quite sure how we would end up the year, recognizing had we not been actuarially sound, we could show that we were making steps toward that soundness. But fortunately, we have received this letter back. They accepted our plan as being actuarially sound. So, again, we have the 1.6 million that we did have on that reserve line. We do recognize that we could still at a later date need some of those funds potentially. But at this point in time, the 600,000 has been what we've needed to become actuarially So, just to share some information with you that we shared with our Health Insurance Committee for your consideration would be the fact that we have done a comparison, an ASO, Administrative Services Only, comparison to some surrounding counties and some counties of like size. We've had opportunity to get information from 17 other school districts and government agencies. Just so you'll, just to remind you, we are currently paying $40.14 per contract, per health insurance contract that we have, whether it be an employee only, whether it be a family plan, it is 14, $40.14 per month, per plan is what our ASO rate is. So, we did survey these other 17 districts. And as we had thought, we are, we had a very good rate with Florida Blue. We're able to appreciate and have this rate that we have currently with Florida Blue. Of these 17 other districts, four of those districts were lower than ours. But as we looked at those four that were lower than ours, they are significantly larger than us, those districts. Just to give you an example, of those four others that are, that have a lower rate, because the larger, the more contracts they have, they're able to negotiate a lower ASO rate. And of those four districts, one of them is twice our size, one of them is five times our size, another would be three times our size, and the fourth is four and a half times the size of our district. And that would sort of explain why they're able to get that lower rate that they were able to negotiate. One that we have checked on does show it being a lower rate, but we don't have, we're still waiting on some, a little bit of additional data on that. I'd like to also mention that I have with me today, as I did at the last meeting, Mr. Random with Crown, who works very closely with us with our health insurance. We also reached out to Symetra, and if I could remind you, that's who we have our reinsurance with. And Symetra has opportunity to work with many counties, many agencies, and they deal with all different healthcare providers. So, they are able to see claims that are coming in, claims that are being paid for all of the healthcare providers. And based on their data that they have, they have shared with us that we could, we will anticipate some increases in the Symetra world if we were to go to another provider other than Florida Blue. So, that's something that we just need to consider. Part of what Symetra, and the data that they have, and the reason they project that our claims will increase if we move from Florida Blue, is the fact that the other healthcare providers don't have as good a negotiated rate with our providers, with the medical facilities, with the doctors. Florida has a very good negotiated rate. And if we change providers, we can expect our claims to go up, which would be expenses for our employees as well, their portion of the claim. So, we feel like Symetra is an unbiased third party that we can look to, to get this information from. They, they said that based on facts, based on the numbers that they work with regularly, they would expect our claims to increase by six to nine percent. So, if I could just back up, when we say ours is $40.14, let's hypothetically say that even if someone offered us $5 less, which would be a significant savings, when you calculate that out, we would save overall in a year $100,000 for $5 less, which I'm not sure we could get $5 less, but if we could, we'd save $100,000. But then, Symetra is telling us that we would expect our claims to increase by six to nine percent. So, if you look at what our claims were last year, even if we just take the middle of the road, seven and a half percent, we can expect our claims to go up by approximately a million dollars. So, we might save 100,000 on our ASO fee, but we need to also remember that Symetra, who has this data, is telling us that our claims will go up most likely by a million dollars. They're also telling us, and that they are our reinsurance provider, so they are telling us, if we go with someone other than Florida Blue, because their rates are not, are better than with the facilities than the other companies, we go with someone else, they tell us that they will have to increase our Symetra reinsurance premium because we will be a greater risk to them. Our claims are going to cost us more, we're a greater risk to them, so they're going to have to charge us a higher premium. And they're telling us that our premium will increase by eight to 12 percent. So, based on what last year's premium was, I'll take the middle of the road again, if our premium increases by 10 percent, our premium's going to go up by 60,000. So, again, these are things to consider. And if we're going to save on the ASO fee, we're looking at increased claims, and we're looking at increased Symetra fee, premium.
Symetra's, Symetra's going to go up regardless of who we have correct next year?
They have gone up, yes. We have negotiated.
The six to nine percent?
That will be on top of, of what we're currently going to be paying for 2017. They're going, it will go up. It will go up another eight to 12 percent if we go with another network, because that premium was given to us based on Florida Blue.
But it's going to go up six to nine percent if we stay with Florida Blue? Is that, is that what we're seeing?
And an additional 10 percent if we go on?
No, the six to nine is what our claims would increase. The actual premium has gone up.
But will the premium go up next year if we stay with Florida Blue? How much would that be?
For 2017 or 2018?
For 2018.
We don't have a quote yet from them.
What about 2017? The $40?
It went up to the $40.14, but he's asking what percentage that was.
I'm, I'm, I'm asking for the reinsurance.
I understand. And I do have that, if you want to give me just a second. No, no, the percentage, but last year, our reinsurance was 600,000. And this year, and I explained at the last meeting why this was, it went to 700,000. So, for 2018, we could expect an eight to 12 percent increase on that 700,000, which would be 70,000.
But you see what I'm saying though, Sherry? It says if not with Florida Blue, that, that's what they're saying, if we stay with Florida Blue, right?
We did stay with Florida Blue for 2017. So, in 2016, we paid 600,000. We negotiated a rate, and because of those reasons we explained last time, an extremely high claimant that we have, we had a significant increase mainly because of that. And so, we are at 700,000 for year 2017. They're telling us that for 2018, if we change, and that is staying with Florida Blue.
Right.
But for 2018, if we don't stay with Florida Blue, it will go up an additional eight to 12 on top of this big hike we had because of this particular individual and because of the high claims. I would not anticipate, if we stay with Florida Blue, I wouldn't anticipate that we're going to have that big of a jump like we did from 16 to 17. That big jump was because of that. Unless we have another huge factor that we're not expecting, I wouldn't expect that much of an increase again.
So, but if, if I'm going off this, if I say if, that second statement, if with Florida Blue, okay? What, this, our Symetra premium will increase, probably nothing, you're saying?
I wouldn't say probably nothing.
Okay.
There would be a slight increase, I would suspect.
Yeah, I would, if we stay with Florida Blue versus if we not, with, with it's Symetra, I know we're using the Symetra data to increase, I mean, we're, we have to look at that because that's the, the savings on premiums.
Good morning. What they're saying is, is we still have to go through our renewal process, whether we have Florida Blue or whoever the ASO carrier would be. So, and right now, it's too early to tell what the claims increase would be for 2018. But what they're saying is, is on top of whatever we have to budget for, for claims, they're saying if there is another carrier there, we would have to add an additional percentage to that for, for paying claims. That's what they're saying.
So, just for argument, let's just say that to get $700, 700,000 in claims, let's say that was, that was 1,000 units that, that that involved. You're saying if it wasn't Florida Blue, those same 1,000 claims might have cost us $900,000 instead of 700,000.
Well, what they're saying is...
Or that's what they're, they're, they're suggesting that that could be the case because of the rates that they're getting with the providers.
Right.
And then, there would be a difference between that $200,000, let's say theoretic difference on the reinsurance.
So, what they're saying is, right now, your claims were, on a gross claims basis for 2016 was 12.7 million.
Right.
They're saying if we take those claims and put them with another, another ASO carrier, we'd look, we would have to add anywhere from six to nine percent to pay those same claims. Now, we also have to take into account for trend and so forth, as we look to 2018, as we move forward. But we would have to add an additional budget dollars to account because of the discounts that, that, that are not there with the other.
Because they're saying even if you had, if you mirrored every claim to be the same with another provider, they're suggesting it'd be a six to nine percent increase.
Correct.
I know you've used additional models, but I'm saying, just from that perspective, if you mirrored the claims, they're saying six to nine percent more we'd be paying with another carrier.
Yes.
And then, because of that, that would be that much more reinsurance that we would then have to pay, and that's what they're suggesting. Not only are you having the six to nine percent, but you're also having the, the reinsurance increase.
Right. There's additional exposure on the, the large claimant, which is the specific premium, which is the 700,000 the carrier was speaking about. Yeah, that would be an additional cost for that. But the big dollar is over on the six to nine percent, because that's where our, where our claims are, that's where the 12 million dollars is. Not, the premium we pay is a very small portion. It's the claims that we have to budget for, that's where the, that's where the real meat is.
Hey, I just want, I think you've just clarified it for me, but I, I had the same problem with the line that we're discussing, saying our claims would be higher. I was looking at the number of claims, but you're looking at the amount paid for each claim. You're not saying that you would have more claims because we didn't have Florida Blue?
Correct.
It'd be the same amount of claims, it would be the amount paid by each claim.
That's correct.
Because I thought, why would we have more claims just because we can't?
Yes. No, thank you for that clarification. You're exactly right.
Okay.
And then, just to share with you, the Health Insurance Committee, and I appreciate the fact that Mrs. Bryan is on our Health Insurance Committee, and we have broad representation. We have representation from all school sites and all district departments. There's instructional, there's support, there's administrative. Their recommendation by an overwhelming majority was that the district meet with Florida Blue and discuss renewal with Florida Blue rather than go out for the RFP. And their feeling is also that if Florida Blue is able to offer us a rate that is still well below what the average is based on that survey that we have done, that we would stay with Florida Blue, in their opinion. Some of the reasons that they were citing, they're pleased with the service that we received from Florida Blue. They prefer, if at all possible, not to have to change healthcare providers and go to another network. And they don't want, one thing that was discussed among several, where they don't want any interruption in network providers, the in-network providers that we have with Florida Blue. They don't want to have to change providers because they may not be in network with other companies. So, again, that's the recommendation of the committee, and that is what I'm asking approval for, is to follow that recommendation and to meet with Florida Blue and see if they're able to continue with. We have a, a good thought, a good probability that they're going to offer us something really good, you know, a good plan, that we would be able to continue with them. I think they want to keep our business if at all possible. So, I think it's worth having that meeting with them and seeing what, what they have to offer for us. And again, that's the committee recommendation. So, did anyone have any questions about anything, or is it?
I'm wondering, how, if we could make the, when would that happen?
I think they would be prepared to meet with us a quick turnaround.
Just for...
I would say, I mean, within a week or two. We just got to get on their calendar or something.
Just for clarification, I'm pretty sure I know the answer, but just so that the public also, all of this has nothing to do with the wellness center, the services at the wellness center, the service level at the wellness center. This has to do with just the operational management and control of, of the individual policies through Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Correct.
And so, you, and basically, what we're saying is that if you want to go back to Florida Blue and say, hey, we want to renegotiate this contract.
What can you do for us?
What can you do for us? And we're not making a commitment to them right now, we're just making a commitment to negotiate, correct, rather than bid.
Correct.
So, we negotiate the contract, we're trying to enter into contract negotiations for additional years.
Right. There's no commitment at this point to...
So, we would have to come back and approve it?
Correct.
Enter any...
And when does it expire by?
In the calendar.
And now, those negotiations will deal with the entire pension, the wellness dollars, the, the contract period, you know, I, I think it's wise not to get into a four-year contract or to have a three-year contract or to have a two-year plus renewal. I know Mr. Blocker and Sherry, I was starting to talk a little bit about that. I mean, to me, that means a lot. There's going to be changes in healthcare in the next few years, and I would prefer not to enter into a four-year contract. And so, you know, I think that, that, in my view, is part of this, I mean, what you negotiate protects us. If there's an out clause, what we need to have there protects the bottom line of this health insurance contract.
It's a moving target right now.
Yeah, it's a moving target.
It has a margin, yeah. And, I mean, we've, we've dealt this through the Affordable Care Act right now, and it's been challenging enough. But, and Mr. Brech, or maybe it's, it's more of a legal question, but if we, if we enter into a contract and for some reason, they, let's just say that whatever comes out of this, Mr. Dog's saying, and I think is a valid point, it puts us into some new exposure of some sort, or, or reduces our exposure, so therefore, we've been paying for a cost that maybe we wouldn't have to pay for, I think that's the other side of it. I would think that the federal government, I mean, the law, federal law's going to circumcise, I mean, it's going to be over any contract with regards to healthcare. I mean, if we cover all...
We can also...
Yeah. Maybe that's, that's the approach that we certainly will make sure that, and like currently now, the, the contract we have is, it's annually, you know, we can get out of it at any time during the year. We have those out clauses now. It is a four-year deal, but we can, you know, have, if we have out clauses, then we can exit the, the contract. We may lose, you know, if we were paid our front typical wellness dollars, so we have to structure in such a way that we don't want to put ourselves in jeopardy losing those dollars the next time around, so.
Yeah, we wouldn't want to have to pay money to get out of it.
Correct. Correct. So, we would have to make sure we negotiated all those terms and conditions and actually have an out clause or, or a different modifier to say that if some changes in the federal government with Affordable Healthcare, that, you know, this will modify as well, so.
And then, the pharmaceutical contract?
I think we would still be prepared to go off for RFP on the pharmaceuticals, and go off against a different pharmacy benefit manager. Right now, we've kind of locked in with Florida Blue and their pharmacy benefit manager, but I think it may be for it to still go off to the pharmacy aspect of it. And just, and let Florida Blue bid on it as well as other PPMs out there.
And there's no indication from Florida Blue that they have an issue with that?
No.
They're not going to?
We haven't heard of any issues with them, but once we start talking to them, we'll hear what they have to say. After tonight, there could be a whole lot of conversation getting more... I think this just gives us the, the opportunity to speak to them and see what they have to offer, and if we feel like we can come to some type of resolution that's beneficial to the Health Insurance Fund and the school district and employees, we would come back and present it to them. We think employer plans are going to all be in a similar boat, though, the way it sounds like some of the various conversations are shaping up.
Right.
There seems to be, whether there's going to be a shift away from depending on employer plans or not. Typically, the way those things are written, they all follow the federal guidelines. When federal guidelines change, they kind of in concert change with them.
All right. And motions?
I would move that we would approve the committee recommendation for the meeting with the district and Florida Blue to discuss the renewal of the contract prior to issuing the RFP.
Second. You have a motion by Ms. Powers, second. Do you have any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Here's five zero.
Thank you.
Attorney Legal Matters.
Two quick things. Number one, the letter that I sent to the county, the large county, it's not supposed to, 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 to,[1720.12] sure that we are implementing that charter as effectively as we can. Also, we reviewed some former contracts. We looked at the original contract and also the 2007 contract, which is up for renewal this summer. So if you don't mind, I'm going to highlight some of those things that we reviewed in that meeting before we came to any recommendations. And the AES mission, and I've highlighted a few words throughout to draw attention to the overall mission. Environmental stewardship and opportunities in natural sciences is the mission of AES. And if you look at the core philosophy per the charter, it also stresses that getting students ready for entry-level positions and/or post-secondary education in careers related to environmental science, ensure relevance preparation for environmental science careers, and also it stresses working with environmental organizations. So again, that's very apparent, that schools set up to serve the environmental science population or students that are interested in that area. The original charter in reference to who would attend, I found this very interesting. Again, this was the original charter and has changed in contract since then. It was a half a year beginning 10th grade, continuing through the 12th grade. And the courses that a student would take at AES were science, language arts, and research classes, and most of the time those research classes were related to science. And then at the base school, they would take their mass social studies and other required electives. And their original target number was 60, 76 students. And then if you jump to the 2007 contract in reference to who would attend, was a maximum of 80 students, but if the facility expanded or improved, they might increase their population. And I think at one point, they screened in a room which allowed them to, which allowed them to have a few more students at their campus. And in this contract, students will ideally attend one half of each school year in grades nine through 12. Other key components, and again, it's a little bit redundant, but I'm trying to stress that, you know, the mission and the focus of AES, but in the appendix of the contract, facilitate learning about the environment with a focus on careers in environmental science. It talks about appropriate stewardship of the environmental and natural sciences, preparation for environmental science careers, and again, it talks about taking classes in science, language arts, and research on those campuses. And again, focused academic curriculum in the field of science and language arts. Other key components, and again, these are somewhat redundant, so I won't repeat myself, but there was an appendix A, and I believe this was only included in the original contract. I did not see it attached to the 2007 contract, so I had some question of whether that appendix was intended to be with the 2007 contract. I don't think it, I do not think it was. But at one time, there was a set curriculum that was in the contract that students would take this set curriculum, and it reflects the science, the language arts, and the research related to science. And I bring these out because somewhere along the way, we've expanded those classes and expanded the students, and when we met that day, the sentiment of the committee, and we have some of the committee members here today, we've got some of our guidance counselors and school principals and our district personnel that all attended that, we felt like it was important to sort of get back to some kind of process of what students take here at AES and what students take at their base school. There were, again, it was a very positive collaborative meeting. We sense a frustration a little bit from our counselors that, you know, it just makes it difficult without a plan, because, you know, they get students back and there's no telling exactly what they would have taken and now trying to piece together a schedule. So, you know, when you're scheduling mass students, as many of you know, you really have to have a plan in place, at least an outline or a framework of a plan, because if you don't, then we lose the focus and what's doing, you know, doing what's right or best for students. You know, our current student progression plan, which we adjusted a little bit within the past few months at a board meeting, you know, we have that listed there, but in a nutshell, ninth grade students can attend a full year, 10th and 11th grade students a semester, and then the 12th grade students with meeting graduate, are on track for graduation requirements and approval signatures, they could go a full year of the 12th grade year.
Could you go back to that for us there? So this was the student progression plan that was approved last year? Or this is the current student?
No.
Which, right, okay.
And then suspended.
Suspended, right, okay.
Right, this includes those adjustments that you suggested in January, right? So now we're going to get into the...
And Mr. Rollins, just, I apologize, but just, and at that point, the biggest difference we did was we increased it to include all of the, potentially all of the senior year.
Correct.
Where previously, it only included the one semester for the senior year.
Right, because if you think about that 2007 contract, it said students will attend a half a year from ninth grade to 12th grade, and you increased it from half a year for seniors to a full year potentially for seniors.
Or from five semesters out of eight, six semesters out of eight.
So I'm going to share the recommendations that day. We had a lot of discussion, and the, at that time, the AES lead teacher recommendations, her recommendations at that time were that ninth grade students attend a full year and 10th grade students attend a full year. There's a little indifference from her about 11th grade, but she suggested that 12th grade students should attend their base school and should not attend necessarily at AES where they're senior year. So as we talked about it, our base school said that's not going to work for us. Ninth and 10th grade students, full year out there, us not having any contact with them, arriving in 11th grade, that's not a recipe for success for that student never have attended their base school. So we talked a little bit more. We did not come to a consensus between the lead teacher and our representatives, but these are our recommendations from the school committee, and as we went through these, the lead teacher at that time did say, this looks like this could potentially work for us. So she never did fully endorse it, but she did have some positive commentary about it. And I'm going to give you two options, and they're both very similar with only one slight difference that we talked about. Students would attend the second semester of their ninth grade year at AES, and they would attend the first semester of the 10th grade at AES. And then during the 11th and 12th grade years, they would attend their base school. And we talked about numbers that day, and we did not hash out numbers specifically, but we talked about if you had 75 to 100 ninth grade students, they would rotate up to 10th grade, and that would keep your population anywhere from 75 to 100 students at all times in AES. And at that meeting, Ms. Balfour wanted to have around 100 students, so we felt like that would meet those goals. We did have an asterisk, because we realized that during a transition year, you need to have some flexibility, because you can't just implement something and expect the numbers to work exactly. So what we discussed was that during the 1718 transition year, and only the 1718 transition year, 11th grade students could attend the first or second semester at AES, and then 12th grade students could attend both semesters if they were in good standing. So that would allow the flexibility in case they did not have enough, ninth graders moving to 10th grade at this time would give them, you know, hopefully enough students to be around that 100 student mark that they were looking for.
Mr. Rollins, I have John O'Neal, and maybe an option two that you just flashed, but the language that we discussed earlier about the 12th grade students, when we were remending that, and the language that we were talking about, said that they had to be on track to graduate, and that language is missing here.
In this slide?
This is a proposed language.
Okay.
This is, this other half is not...
Okay.
But, and I would agree, I thought, Ms. Counsel, that's an excellent point. I think if, that's, I think, the type of thing we're looking at is to make sure that we're, we have those, like, on track to graduate.
Right, now with this...
And I know we're not, we're not even close to that, but I think we ought to at least stay mindful.
Yeah, and with this transition option, yeah, I think the language that was created in January would probably apply to something like this. Option two, the difference in the first option and this option is students would attend their 11th grade year at AES the first semester. And at a principal meeting, we had further discussion, and we even clarified that maybe that option a little bit further, that for that 11th grade year, students could attend first or second semester of their 11th grade year. So option two basically includes ninth grade students, second semester, 10th grade students, the first semester, and then 11th grade year, they could attend first or second semester, and that's option two. Any questions about those two options that have been presented thus far?
And option two says no 12th grade.
Correct. And again, at that meeting on that day, because of the discussion that was had from AES and from our representatives on that committee, did not feel like it was best for 12th grade students to attend at AES, and that was a consensus from everyone there, that it was good for them to be back at their base school, get in preparation for post-secondary careers or college, and it was best that the student, the schools, or the counselors and all their resources could best help a student prepare for post-secondary. And that day, we did break it down even further into suggested courses or a framework for courses. And in the ninth grade, a student at their base school would have their mass social studies, health, personal fitness, and elective. And second semester, they, at AES, they would take a science, environmental science, physical science, or biology, that could be determined, and then ELA, and then the two elective courses, which could be science-related electives. And we, at that time, there was a concern expressed from the AES representative that, well, if they don't come to our school the first semester, they, you know, they may lose interest and not want to come to us the second semester, so I believe one of our counselors suggested, why don't we provide some type of field trips, you know, two or three field trips the first semester, so that students could go out and visit AES and sort of keep that interest up and, you know, keep them motivated so that they would want to attend the second semester as an eighth grader. 10th grade students, they would go to AES the first semester, again, a very similar track, where you'd take the science, one of the required sciences, an elective course related to literature, you know, contemporary led, creative writing, or something along those lines, and then two electives, you know, or research courses that would be science-related. And then semester two at their base school, math, social studies, ELA two, and an elective. And there was some discussion of whether English Language Arts two should be offered at AES or at the base school, and it was determined, since the state testing, the FSA is the second semester, it may be best if they took that course at their base school during the second semester.
Move to the preparation for that testing that's done in the first semester. Still got, because of the block scheduling, you know, you've got children that are preparing the first, well, I see what you're saying, just never mind, because they're going to have an elective course at AES, and then they'll come to us the second semester.
Right.
Aye, Mr. State.
And then with the 11th grade option, which was our option two, if that's included, then again, and you could possibly flip these back and forth, but semester one at AES, science, ELA, and then again, the two electives related to science at AES, and then at the base school, they would continue their math, social studies, and other electives. Any questions, commentary that you'd like to make about those sequence of courses?
The only thing with, of the 10th grade, it looks like, in essence, though, then you're doubling up on ELA. Am I seeing that correct? I mean, or Ms. Counsel, I know that's kind of your area.
That's their testing year, and...
And that's okay, I mean, you think that's a kind of a...
We try to do that as much as possible.
No, that's why I say...
For teachers or things like that, but we try and make sure that they are working on their testing stuff. I had a question about the 10th grade or the 11th grade.
Okay.
If you offer the ELA at the AES, then are you going to offer the AP levels?
The AP level, ELA at AES?
Yeah.
We didn't really, we didn't hash that out. I would think when you get into any elective courses, not saying ELA, but any type of elective courses, if you wanted to include some AP courses, that could be an option as well.
Yeah, the AP schedule is kind of determined by the advanced placement curriculum, and the ELA line is only offered in the junior year, and then ELA lit in the senior year.
Right, and we know there's tests...
Students may or may not decide based on that if you don't offer it up there.
I don't think it would affect that particularly, for the students, or the teachers, or the teacher's competition, but they're going to offer it, they'll be offered to behind the...
Many times, at our high schools right now, at least the current philosophy is if a student has taken an AP course, regardless of what subject it is, they usually take a course prior to it that's not an AP course, that's related, you know, for example, they may take an honors biology course and then go into an AP biology course all within the same year. And if you look at this 11th grade schedule where you take ELA, say, English three at AES, and then when they come back as one of their electives, they may choose AP Language Arts at their base school, which would be a nice flow.
I don't think we've done it, though, with ELA.
No.
I know we do it with, you know, US history, and we do it with, you know, chemistry and biology now, and, but I don't think, I think ELA is probably one of them.
I think Citrus is doing it, I think they do a...
Citrus, yeah, I see that.
And then first semester, and then they do an English AP in the second semester.
It's honors in the fall, and then...
Correct.
It's honors in the fall, and then usually advanced placement in this year, with the same teacher, it's married.
So both groups, I don't see any, like, world geography, American history, or history of geography, I mean, I think they are, that's being taught out there now, right? Is that something that we're seeing that would be no longer taught at AES?
That was a recommendation of the committee, because going back to the focus of the original charter, at the school being environmental science, and where it spelled out clearly that it would be science, language arts, and research related to science, we did not find social studies in that original charter, so we felt like, again, it was important to get back to what the charter was focusing on.
And then the same way with math, I mean, there's no math here, so we're saying that math would be taught at base school?
Correct.
No more math offered at AES?
Correct.
Math has been one of the most challenging things, I think, at the high school level for guidance counselors and teachers anyway, and I'm already seeing a little bit of head shaking, because we have so many percentage of kids, and it's Mr. Rollins' fault, who said pardon to him, of, that are graduating middle school with at least Algebra I, but many of them with geometry. So now you've got almost three sets of kids going in three different directions when it comes to math their freshman year. And I know that's a challenge that the high schools have been dealing with, particularly lower order, and how do we deal with those higher order, you know, math options, and so I know that, I can understand with math. My question too about the AP, AP English in 11th grade is, you also then get into dual enrollment question at that point, because that's usually one of those courses that becomes one of those dual enrollment questions. Now, I think, do we, is that one that we typically offer on campus at the, or is that one of the one, okay?
At Crystal River.
It's kind of a, and so that's why I, I know that's where some people start getting their feet wet with, you know, with some of that dual enrollment.
I would think for them, where AES offered dual enrollment on their campus would be good, because they have the teacher's knowledge.
Right.
And also, I think we, I don't know if that's why, but that's one of the reasons why you wouldn't include AP, ELA at AES, because they would have some options at their base school, either to do dual enrollment or to take that AP course at their base school.
Because there's, you know, that's two, and I'm not disagreeing with the recommendation, but I would say typically, it seems like in social studies in your 11th grade year, you're either taking social studies honors, or you're just taking social studies, and then the next semester you would take, if you're taking honors, a lot of times you're taking the AP side of that. It would seem that you would almost be able to more easily mirror up a social studies curriculum in that area at AES than you might even ELA in that year. That's not, now, the problem is, is it's trying to find that a perfect teacher that has the right qualifications to be able to teach becomes more challenging, but, I mean, if you were looking on that, but if you're looking for something that really correlates back to the base school, that's certainly a consideration.
But I think from what Mr. Rollins is saying, is I think the course selections are trying to stay with the vision and the mirror of the focus of the environmental, I mean, natural sciences and environmental sciences, and history doesn't match that at all.
It doesn't, but at the time, I think, when they did that, we didn't have the course situation that we do today. Back then, we had straight ELA, when the, you know, where now we've gotten more into the choices of the AP, the dual enrollment options for those students, I think that's becoming more of a continual focus, particularly, I think, with some of the AES students that have wanted those options, and I think that's where in the past AES was trying to offer those to accommodate those students. And I'm saying, you know, that's, that may not change in that regard.
It's going to be impossible to have a one-size-fits-all...
I agree.
And kids have to make choices. Sometimes band fours only offer the same title P course. So they've got to make choices. They can't, everything, everything's not going to work out perfectly for every student.
Yeah.
I'm trying to have a plan that makes sense. And social studies was not part of the original plan. And that's the one that was, the school sort of felt like we need to stay in school. And, you know, I, I don't run the AES budget, but I would think it's difficult for them to try to offer a buffet of courses with a few teachers that they're adding to pay. It's going to be difficult for them to be able to meet their payroll with, with eight to a hundred students if they're offering all of those courses. But I think in long term, if they focus on the courses that we agreed to, it's going to be financially better for them as well.
And I think most of our other academies and programs, you know, from your freshman year, through your senior year, what courses you're going to take for that track. Now, some of the, the electives change and modify, but I, I know in biomedical, you have this, you know, biomedical one, two, three, four.
And that's what they're trying to do here. It's the same thing we're doing at every other, with every other track with students is let's set out a full-year plan as opposed to just developing a plan at the end of the year.
And that was one of the discussions that came up at the committee is someone brought up, well, what do all of our academies do? And it's like, yes, it's very scripted. You take this first year, the second year, third year, and it, it functions efficiently when it's scheduled like that.
And, and just kind of off subject though, but with our other academies, is I the only one that's really where all the students tend to go within a cycle? I mean, I know like my son's in the Health Academy and there's English, I think the first year that's a Health Academy English, but after that, well, two, no, I'm saying the first year. That's the, the only two courses that they take is biomedical or your son, your academy science and your English. And, oh, and Spanish has been offered.
First two years of it.
The first two years. But after that, it's, it's really just one semester you're taking an elective with that. And then the rest of it, you're a general ed student within the program.
Two sciences.
Two sciences.
Two sciences.
We've expanded it. We've expanded it to be more of an academy including more courses.
Right.
So what you're saying is correct. A couple of years ago, and each year, we're, we're making it more of an academy.
Okay, I'll move to the next slide. And this really wasn't a discussion that day, but it's something that just came up recently with microschool. And I don't want to get on a tangent, but microschool, microschool went through an audit, a budget audit. And, and just in a short synopsis of that meeting, we met with the gentleman from the state who was in charge of the budget portion of charter schools, and he's part of the bigger picture of charter schools. And, and we learned a lot that we have, although we don't have authority, say, so to speak, over microschool, we have a lot of responsibility. And he was filling us in more about our responsibilities and working with charter. One thing that we do with microschool that was lifted out, that's a very positive part of the process, is throughout all of our departments in the district, we have a mid-year meeting with microschool, or we have a mid-year evaluation forum. I don't know if evaluation forum is the best term, but a sort of an oversight forum where each of these departments that you should have listed on this slide, somebody in our district is responsible for reviewing microschool's processes related to this. And we sit down, and it's a very collaborative meeting with, with the microschool, mid-year, end-of-year. These are our, you know, people that are overseeing these departments. This is, you know, it's working well here, maybe it's not working so well here. Let's talk about how we can improve that process. And, and again, this wouldn't be in the student progression plan, but we would like to, to do something similar with AES next year and the following year so that we can work collaboratively together and, and be a good resource and make sure information is being open and shared effectively. So I just shared that slide with you. It's just something that I think we can improve processes with AES with something like Also, at our current high schools, our base schools, we have a course approval process. So anytime one of our schools wants to add a new course, whether it's to an academy or to their campus, it goes through Mr. Chamberlain's office and then comes to me and Ms. Stanley to make sure it's appropriate and fits with overall plan. And then once we approve it, then it gets implemented at the school. And, and I think we would like to see something similar at AES. You know, again, not to tell them what they can and can't offer, but we want to make sure it fits in with the overall plan for students graduating from high school. Last slide, and then we'll, you know, get any questions you have. Again, from my meeting where we missed Leeper, we've had very good conversations. You know, we both expressed that, that we feel AES is a very valuable option for our students. We want to see it succeed. And our goal together is, you know, putting a plan together that, that can make AES be successful. Some of the concerns expressed, right now they have 27 students signed up for 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. And that was never a consideration when we had our meeting because that, you know, hasn't happened before. So that was very concerning on her part and our part, and others, 27, nine are seniors. We have, she has 120 students that have applied from the eighth grade to attend as ninth graders, and we know not all those students always attend. You know, they've applied to multiple places, see where they can get in. And, but that is a very high number, very healthy number for applicants. And I think some of it's attributed to that parent night that we had for all the academies.
Thank you for doing that because I think Ivy, Health Academy, all of them have said they had some of the record numbers of applicants because of that night. So that's really a testament to getting students and families to know about what offerings there is.
Yeah, that was it. Great evening.
And Citrus High's Codeex Academy as well.
So under the, the plans that we've recommended today, even with our transition plan, they're still concerned that they may not have enough students to, to open the doors, so to speak, next year because if you only have 27 students that are returning, and although you have a high number of ninth graders in our current schedule, they're, they're supposed to start in the second semester. So that does not, they, they want to make, be around 100 students most of the time out there.
What about, excuse me, what about the 10th grade?
Again, 27 students of 10th, 11th, and 12th grade students at AES.
That's all we have now. They could possibly go out and do another recruiting. We could try to get some more kids that retargets or more kids. I think, I think it's a, and I would suggest that we do this, if you agree with this plan, that we, we do this and go back out and retarget students and show them that it's back to a focus on environmental science as opposed to just going out there to take courses. And I would also recommend that you consider a transition year in this first year so we, we aren't as stringent about when the, the ninth graders go this first year, just so they can build up their base population of ninth graders again. Because they'll lose a few, just like we all lose a few from year to year. So this first year, if they start off with a larger number, then I think they'd be better off down the road. Because we, and we just, we want to work with AES to do what's best for the kids out there. We don't want to lose that as a resource. But we do feel that the greatest resource AES is, is that it's an environmental science academy, not that it's just a small school on the river. It is an environmental science academy, and that's where we think the focus should be back there, is environmental science.
Really, that is somewhat, you know, in both of the recommendations, and I'm not saying the board is, you know, going in any one direction, but it looks like you almost have to double up anyway for even these recommendations to get the numbers where you would need them to be.
I think.
So in some ways, maybe the benefit is that this year has that uber number of.
And I think we just, you know, we have some flexibility in the first year of the transition.
Well, bigly is a, as a new term that's being used.
And that was interesting that day, that, you know, some, there was a few examples shared that there were students who initially had interest in going to AES because it was an environmental science school, but once they realized that, that didn't have that strong focus, some students chose, well, I'm going to not go to school there because it's not an environmental science focus overall. So we found that, that was a pretty interesting conversation. So again, we, as Mr. Rollins stated, I think if, you know, in light of the numbers, if we allowed a little bit of flexibility in this transition year to, to get through this transition year, would, would be excellent for the next school year. And part of that would be allowing ninth grade students to possibly attend the first or second semester, if that's what it takes to make it work.
First or second semester, but not both.
Not both.
And have to go back to their base school at one time during their ninth grade.
Correct. And I know that's not, not ideal, and that's not what the committee wanted that day, but, but in light of the circumstances that, that have been shared recently, and that's a concern that, that we have to, to deal with.
So we're looking at changing that progression plan, then we go back to not allowing freshmen to go full year, only one semester of the freshman year?
Right. Option one and option two is ninth graders ultimately will attend second semester of their first year at high school. And 10th graders will attend the first semester. And then, and then if you want to entertain option two for 11th grade students, they could, you know, attend either semester of their 11th grade year.
If you remember January, one of the biggest complaints you heard from the students is, I don't know that school I've ever been there. So we think it's important they get there their freshman year where you're going to be faced with that same dilemma. They're not, they're not going to want to go back to a school that they've never been to.
And I might suggest, just like we were, we're saying, that we could maybe boost the, the 10th grade population by taking a field trip or something like that out there. I think it is the, the first term of their ninth grade year, I think is important. And I think there ought to be some kind of a field trip back, required field trip back to their guidance counselor. Maybe AES should join in with pep rallies and allow the kids to come back to school early for pep rallies at their base school, or football games, or homecoming so that they are, even if they're there for the transition year, they still come back to their base school for certain events to make sure that they're, they don't.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Because it was clearly expressed by all the schools, that ninth grade year, that first semester is all the processes and procedures for that school are typically covered very heavily in the first semester of the freshman year. So that's really what sets a student up for success at their base school is those, those orientations and processes and procedures and expectations.
I'm thinking we, we allow them to come first term this time in the transition year, work with us a little bit to get those kids really on track at their base school also.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea.
And then explain the senior year now with option two. Option two is one semester of senior year?
Senior year, the, the seniors would not go to AES their senior year. During this transition year, would allow that flexibility for seniors to go to school there. But after the 17, 18 school year, seniors would not attend AES.
So the nine juniors that have signed up to return next year, nine seniors for next year, you'll be able to go there the entire year if they're on track to graduate?
Correct.
And then the following year after the transition year, there will be no seniors at AES?
Correct. And again, that was, that students would attend their senior year at their base school because that's when students are, you have a lot of these guidance counselors preparing, whether, you know, they're going to go to college, whether they're preparing for trade school, military, or whatnot. And most of those resources are based at their base school. And I feel like that would be the setting up students for the most success if we did that their senior year.
So I guess I'm, I'm just a little confused. Is recommendation, or is option one and, I know option two shows not having the senior year. So is option one the senior year only for the transition year?
Correct.
Okay, so both options being recommended do not include a senior year?
Correct. And that's where, if, you know, went back to that slide, you'll see where students will go to the base school during 11th and 12th grade year with the asterisk at the bottom where it says, transition students could attend 11th grade year at AES, and then 12th grade can attend both semesters.
So after the transition year, what's the, the maximum for a freshman is one semester? What's your, second semester? And then first semester for sophomore? And then we say no semester for a junior either?
Option one has no to juniors. Option two has juniors included and could attend either semester their 11th grade year.
And, but both options have no seniors?
Correct, no seniors.
That's right.
Except for the transition year.
Right. So is AES able to stay financially viable with just option one, with no juniors or seniors?
We don't know that. Option two, I would think would be viable for seniors or seniors.
Right. Option two is, is probably a little bit more of a safety than allowing 11th grade students in case, in case they had a low interest for a ninth grade year, or some of the 10th grade, 10th graders did not want to come back, their 10th grade, or ninth graders didn't want to come back to their 10th grade year. Adding that 11th grade year gives you a little more flexibility to keep those numbers up.
So if we had a really evolved student in, in the sciences, in environmental science though, we're basically not allowing them to go their senior year. So even if, would there be any way that they could still do a semester of senior year? Or is that going to bind the academy, bind the academy as far as the schedule and what they have to offer?
That thing with everyone on the committee, and I know there's extenuating circumstances with the AES lead teacher, everyone there, including that person, did not feel that seniors should attend AES.
But I think though, whether it's seniors or not seniors or, or that, what I'm hearing though, over and over, is a set curriculum and a set schedule. So I think it's, I think you either then have to have this thing of either you, if you are doing seniors, you've got to have then a program curriculum that, that is for them, not something we kind of, and this, with respect, but not something we just kind of make up for one, to accommodate one kid. And, and I say that with all of our academies. We've got kids that finish their CNAs in their junior year, and they may be still very heavily medical, but there's not a whole lot maybe for them their senior year because they've, they've kind of maxed out. So I, I think that to me, I can, I can certainly agree with the senior, you know, with the recommendation of not having a senior year. I'd be open if they wanted to have a senior year, but I think you need to have then a curriculum that's set and determined and it's not, you know, I think that goes back to the overall thing. There should be a consistency in what courses are offered and that it, you know from what your program is from day one through what's going to be offered. So to me, I think that's, that's where we get into the accommodating, is where we start going down that slivery. So we do want to accommodate all kids, but for example, there is dual enrollment options if someone wants, you know, things there. There is virtual dual enrollment options for, you know, starting to get into collegiate, you know, marine forces and other things of that nature. And there, and students could be steered in that direction to look at those options.
And I don't know if any of our school representatives want to comment on senior, there's the senior year recommendation. You're welcome to come share your thoughts on that.
That would be great.
I personally.
Don't all run forward.
Personally, I just prefer as a guidance counselor to have more access to my seniors. Tracking them for bright futures is really difficult when they're not there. Just maintaining communication with them. It's, it's very difficult when they're not on your campus and there's just so much going on the senior year, so much. I would prefer that they were on our campus.
And I have to, as having a senior, and, and I happen to, my, having the last name of Kay falls under Ms. Mason's. And I, all the good things we thought about you guys as guidance counselors, I still can't get over until we have a senior year, how much you guys do for the students, for the parents, families, scholarship applications, running off those, those transcripts and, and all of the bird dogging you're doing. And that's with kids that are on track. And I know the kids that aren't on track, you guys are doing a whole lot more. They're in therapy, Dr. Connor's office, and we, we don't send them to Mr. Coon if we can avoid it unless it's a tech issue. But we, but truly, we, we appreciate that because there is so much that goes on that senior year. We love you, Jason.
And the other thing, so we're going to work on this, on the progression plan because I understand the contract is going to be more of a general.
I think what we, we would ask is in the future that we put in the contract that we would, that they'll agree to adhere to the pupil progression plan. I think what's happened in the past is you have a contract that says one thing and a pupil progression plan says something else, and as one gets updated, the other doesn't. You, I don't think you need to say the same thing in two different documents. So we would, we would ask that academics, the curriculum be addressed in the pupil progression plan, and that be stated in the contract, that academics will be addressed in the pupil progression plan, they'll comply with that.
And the, the contract will be more along the business lines of the charter.
Personnel issues, the financial issues and those kind of things that we, we work out with.
And the pupil progression plan is something that we review annually, and as needs rise, we can always change that.
Absolutely. So it's something that if we come back to you and say, this isn't working, they can't keep their numbers up, then we would look at another option.
And it's required in statute for us to update pupil progression plan annually, so that must be updated for us on an annual. that must be updated for us on an annual basis.
And I mean, you know, I know I want to see AES thrive, and I, you know, in some ways, I sometimes think that, I don't want to tie their hands where they can't get students. So if there were to be a problem, I guess we can look at that in the next progression plan.
That's why we're suggesting transitioning into this the first year so that we don't create a situation where they don't have students. That we can have some flexibility in the first year, and that we can get a good feel for how that's going over the second year more than ever. But I do think having a standard curriculum that those students are taking is going to be an important part of solving any issues that they might have.
My opinion, this is too, is, once I get a little more direction from the board, but something like this that is subject to change, you know, we need to make it where it's based upon something that's outside of the contract, which would, like in this case, would be the student progression plan, just to read, you know, in the contract that the academy's going to follow, the student progression plan is done by, by the school board. Because although this contract that we're, that's coming, it's going to terminate at the end of June, was a 10-year contract, I'm also, my recommendation is not to do another 10-year contract, but do something a whole lot shorter, somewhere in the three to five year range because the charter school laws keep changing. So I also don't want to, you know, put the board into a position like, okay, we're going to, you know, contract out 10 years, and then, you know, so we can just sit down and say, I'm not changing anything, you're not modifying anything, you're stuck in a contract for that long. And I think that many more of the contracts that charter schools are much much shorter than what we, what we originally done. But like those types of things, like, you know, with these bright now, you know, human resources is, you know, there are teachers, so we're going to tighten up a lot of that. A lot of it's going to be based upon, you know, just our policies, you know, and the board's policies and procedures, which all can change, you know, at any given time. There's a recommendation here of a district, school district committee having to do with course approval. Was that something that would be in the contract? Because that doesn't really part of, I think, pupil progression plan.
I would make that part of the contract if they have to, you know, any course that the academy board would want to, you know, have taught there, would be subject to going through our course approval process.
I think for me, one of the biggest things is transition year. We, and what I mean by that is, we need to do, to help AES have those students so that they can be successful in the subsequent years. And the way to do that is, obviously, is to work together on that transition year. And I'm pleased that staff has recognized that. Staff meeting, for those who don't know, staff meeting in the district for us is looked towards saying that even with our recommendations, we realize there needs to be some flexibility, we're working together in that transition year. Because as Mr. Dodd pointed out, we've got social studies that's out there, that's going to need to be transitioned. But some of those students are going to need to be accommodated and taught those courses in transition year. So there's going to need to be coordination, I think, between the district and the academy on, you know, how that's going to look and what's going to happen with that. The other thing, too, is there may be, and on both sides, there may be more students that are interested in going to the academy knowing, oh, okay, so I'm going to be there only half the time, and I may have a good tie to my base school. I think potentially, there could be much more students going there because you're actually sending a whole new group of students every semester there. And just running some numbers, to me, there, it is actually a higher enrollment over the long term of how many students then get access to that school. Because conceivably, you're doubling the amount of students that would have access to that school, nearly doubling that.
Any other questions or comments?
Just like you're setting a pattern of study, it's comfortable, you know, what next year they're going to be this, the following year they're going to be that. It's not just all jumping, jumping, it's.
So we, if we work this out of the progression plan, and the contract's going to be more the business end, I know it was discussed that we have a look at a joint meeting of boards, but is there really a need for that if you're going to work out the student progression plan? What's the, what's the?
Well, there'll be other issues. Let me, let me back up. Because it sounds to me like more, you know, one of the questions I was going to ask is, what's the board's intent, okay? Because, you know, you have an on your date deadline, you're still going to do it, you're not going to resign, you know, you're probably terminated or whatever, kind of something like that.
Are you terminated?
But, you know, another option is for, you know, the way that the history of our school is, is basically like one of our schools that's run by another board. So it's almost like they're managing the school, and all the, all the issues that happen out there fall back here or to the school. So other options are, you know, when I was thinking about this, if they want to do a true charter, which means that they have to apply to the charter school, and they run it, you know, they have to, and everything else, they run it on the ground, and they, you know, they hire their teachers, you know, they get their students, they do all that. And if we step out of it, and they run it however, however they want, the student, actually graduates from that school, I don't know if that's something that they're going to be able to undertake, and then we can have enough to go through with that. But, so if they're not heading down that route, there's going to be other issues that are going to be discussed, is how we're going to handle HR management, which currently, we can't allow the HR manager to discipline, you know, we just, the students will discipline, the teachers, our instructional staff, and all of those fall onto us. There's going to be, in my opinion, there needs to be more responsibility placed on the AES board, on some of that. There may need to be some financial responsibility placed on the AES board, some of this, depending on what the circumstances are. I know there's just a litany. So I'd be more than happy to have private discussions with their attorney, if they go through that route, or, I don't know what you're saying, do we have a board sit down like that? Well, one of the things I think is, is if this board, if our board today says, listen, we're, we could work with either one of these two options. And we, you know, go forth, you know, go forth and, you know, let's see where we, we can work those through because there's transition issues to talk about, there's some other ones. That's not to say, that's just our board saying that. So our board can say that, the AES board can meet and say, we don't want any part of everything you've just said, and where does that leave us? No, I mean, I'm asking that question, where did that leave us legally then? Because our, if we send a letter of intent, our letter of intent is based on, for the moment, this conversation today.
It's based upon us, it's based upon, you know, obviously, you know, coming to an agreement on the contract. Obviously, it has to be the contract terminated and that can be done. So if the person would like to say, we would like to, in some of these terms, we would say yes, sir.
And at that point, if the answer is that they say no, or that there is not a meeting of the minds that take place, what happens?
Contract terminated.
I think, though, that this group of our administrators, our counselors, and the AES board have done, and I think, it sounds like Mr. Mullin was quite a part of the, you know, I compliment you on the work that you brought us today. I think it's clear, I think it's in the best interest of the kids. And I don't have any problem with either one of the options either. So I think you working with the AES attorney, running up with the contract, and then, I don't think we need to be involved until you bring us the contract and pupil progression language, and that's it. I think you guys have done a tremendous job of settling some of this out of there.
And the notifications need to go up by the end of March. So I think if this faculty starts bringing out a contract, obviously, if we have, you know, there's a time left between now and then. There is, I think, though, an issue that the AES, because I know I've already seen on Facebook, everybody's asking whether they've gotten acceptance letters to all the different academies and so forth. I think, though, the one direction is, is hopefully, what we'll end up consensus, you know, giving consensus here, allows you to sit down with AES and hammer out a transition plan so that they can make a decision about getting those notices out.
The fact is, they don't, there isn't even an administrator there right now. So we.
Will, is the conversation, we're going, though, right now, would that allow you all to be able to then move forward with a transition?
Yes. We know that the board is going to support option two with a transition year, give us some flexibility that we can go ahead and move forward with AES, allow them to start sending out acceptance letters to ninth graders, and they can start moving forward with that process.
And all our academies had a deadline of, actually, the end of this month, with February, to send out acceptance letters. So we're all operating under the same timeline.
But I don't know that AES has been able to release those yet. Because they don't, they're still, I think, they were waiting for today's meeting to see what direction. So I think the hope is, is that there'll be enough.
Given them the flexibility for freshmen, because that was the big holdout, so we got to tell freshmen they can't come till January, and they weren't going to have enough students going to the doors in August. But if we're going to give them that flexibility in the first year and the transition year, which we recommend doing, then I think they'll be okay, they'll be able to move forward, and they can start on a favorable year. But again, back to Mr. Bradshaw, and I don't foresee this happening. If Mr. Bradshaw and their attorney work out a contract, and you or the AES board are not agreeable to it, and that follows through, that we would, falls back on the schools, that they'll have to reschedule those freshmen, and I don't foresee that happening. I just want to make sure you're aware of that.
And that's really what my question was, to make sure that we realize it's still.
I can't, I can't, if we've come this far, I can't see that.
I don't either. But again, I, back to Mr. Dodd's original question, I don't know what all of you sitting in one meeting would accomplish if the two attorneys aren't going to accomplish getting input from their boards, and their staffs, and the board.
The answer to the question was, what happens if we can't come to a agreement? You know, that's.
I think, I don't know, I have confidence in Mr. Mullin, Mr. Rollin, and the board to do whatever they need to do to get, take the.
They're going.
And so I don't think we even need to motionize, I'm not sure.
No, we, I think we have, we need, we have, we need to have, we'll move forward and get, you know, rest assured, our goal is to work with them to keep AES thriving and not looking for ways to make it difficult for them to get students. We just want to get back to the mission of AES, and what they were founded to do, and support them here.
So we'll move forward with the option two, which includes 11th grade students. It'll include this transition plan, but it'll also include that ninth graders can attend first or second semester, allowing that flexibility during this transition year.
And I don't think we have, because they don't have, they don't fall under classroom size other than by school average. So they have some flexibility. And then also, if they're electives, they have a lot of flexibility. So what I mean by that is, the numbers has to do with really, you know, you all, between you and them working out the numbers. We don't, it has, it's irrelevant to us.
They know what they'd be enrollment wise to, in order to make their payroll. So they know what that threshold is, they would have.
And while I look, they may be able to take more freshmen, but I realize, and I mean, ultimately, of that 120, if they would have only taken 50 or 60, maybe they can take more than that by splitting it up into two semesters.
Correct. And then all those ninth graders, when they go into 10th grade, they would all go during that first semester.
Right. And that's what I was thinking, why in some ways, there is a, there is a silver lining out of this, and that is that you're going to double up in the year you need to be doubling up.
Just tough to get something like this started if you don't get some flexibility.
That's true. Absolutely.
And that first year, we'll have a little bit of flexibility also with the course offerings as well during this transition year. But the next year, we're going to get, try to get to those course outlines that we've established and the guidelines we've established.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rollin. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Rollin. Excellent job.
We're going to take a five-minute break.